Good afternoon. It is May 6th, and this is our regular Charlottesville City School Board meeting. And I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. And if everybody at this point will join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. And now we're going to, or I'd like to ask clerk, please to call roll for board members.
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Here.
Dr. Kraft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perrier. Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes. The glare is on the screen. I couldn't see what it mean, but was.
Thank you. And our student rep, Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank.
And I'd like to call for a motion for approval of our agenda, please.
Move for approval?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Great. Madam Clerk, may please take a vote on that.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Yes.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier. Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, I forgot to let you know that Ms. Perrier will not be able to make the meeting tonight. Just for your information. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with, if the, my board members would be okay with this, I'd like to make just a couple of quick announcements here before we move on to comments from members of the community. For the public and everybody, if you missed this, I just did want to announce that the Charlottesville City School Board this week, we did hire Hazard, Young, Atiya, and Associates as our firm that will work with us in our superintendent search. We do want to assure the community that we are all committed to listening and ample opportunity for engagement. We've scheduled our first work session with HYA a week from tomorrow, which will be May 14th, from 12 to 2:00. The location is yet to be determined, but that will be announced as soon as we confirm that. So please stay tuned and we will be updating everybody as far as that process and what that, that will be like going forward. But that is a work session. That's the first opportunity that we get to sit with them and kind of lay out calendars and, and the process going forward. As far as locations, I also did want to just let everybody know the community that we've been working. I've been working with the clerk and, and people to try and get us set up to have a school board meeting in person. And we were trying to make that happen for today's meeting, but we're still working on locations and logistics. So we hope that by next month, we will, we will be able to do that with mitigation practices in place. So stay tuned for that as well. And then now if we will move on to our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. We do have some people signed up that registered beforehand. If you will please raise your hand in the Zoom room and Mr. Como will kind of cue you as to when you're up to speak. You do have three minutes to make your comment. And if you will please state your name and address before doing so, that would be great. So let's move on to our, our first round of comments from the members of the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I will just remind attendees just to raise their hand again. I know some have registered to speak, but sometimes people change their minds. So unless I see a hand raised in the gallery or comment made in the chat, I, I do not call on them. Just, just I don't want people to be on the spot. So I see no hands raised at this time for the initial comments. And so I maybe give that a, a period of time to see if anybody does raise their hand and I'll let you know accordingly.
Ms. Thacker, we had, you had several that you had emailed, but none of those are raising their hand. I'm assuming is that correct, Mr. Como?
Yes. At this time, there is nobody in the attendees list with a hand raised and there are no, there are no chat messages indicating that someone would like to speak.
Okay. Give it just a couple more seconds. And I do want to remind everybody that there will be a second opportunity towards the end of the meeting for members of the community to offer comment then as well. And if we're still all clear.
Yep, we are still all clear at this time.
Okay. Then I think we will move on. We're going to move on to student and staff recognitions. And at this point in time, I would ask that Dr. Baptist make those proclamations for us, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Odie. It is always fun to recognize various groups and tonight we're recognizing two very special groups. One that I've had the pleasure of working with a couple of times in my tenures with Charlottesville City Schools. And the first group is the nurses. Nurses are one of the groups that have worked extremely hard this year. And we know that they have, and you've seen their work through all of the COVID work that they've had to do. But not only is COVID something that's very busy for them, but all of the other things that they, they do. And we want to thank the nurses. I just checked to see if any of them were able to join us tonight and they were not. Some of them are working second jobs or actually doing things with their families this evening. So they, they couldn't join us. But in the board information for tonight, there is a resolution from the governor recognizing the nurses for National Nurses Week. And that does start this day. And actually, National School Nurse Day is today, May 6th. But then the week for nurses begins today and goes through next week. So we do have the proclamation and I will make sure that all the nurses, well, they do already know about the proclamation, but I'll make sure that they know again, that they have been recognized by the board. And although they're not here, I would like to thank them for the excellent job that they've done. Any questions about National Nurses Week? This is something that we recognize every year.
There's no questions, just gratitude. Thank you.
And it should be lots of gratitude. And we're, we're losing a couple of our nurses this year to retirement who have been with us quite a while. Renetta Jackson at Burley Moran and Ann Sandrich from the high school. And that is a great loss for our school division. We were in the process of hiring new nurses and we also lost our floating nurse in December to retirement. So we're trying to get all of these positions filled. They can be very big shoes to fill in each of the positions, but we look forward to having other nurses with us.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Would you like for me to do the, the next one too, Ms. Torres?
Yes, that would be great. I'm sorry.
Another group that we definitely need to recognize, the largest group in our school division is our teachers. And this is Teacher Appreciation Week. If we were all in a room together, I would say let's stand, give them all a standing ovation and clap and everything. Because we know that teachers as well have had a very, very tough year. They tried to learn all about virtual learning. Now they're teaching virtually and in classrooms, face to face, just lots of things that they never thought they would be doing. And so we do want to thank all of our teachers who are listening in tonight or those who are not with us. But we will make sure they are enjoying their Teacher Appreciation Week. And this is a resolution signed by the governor. And each year we try to recognize our teachers in some way. Usually we have something delivered to the schools. This year was a little bit different with all of our mitigation pilot, our procedures. But Kim Powell is going to tell you what we have been doing for the teachers this week for teacher appreciation. With Ms. Powell, will you share what we've been doing?
Yes, thank, thank you, Dr. Baptist. We'd like the board to know that we did take a different approach this year. Things are still being delivered, but we're, we're doing it over the course of the entire month. Because we are partnering with the Kindness Cafe, which I did not know anything about until Gertrude Ivory sent a lovely gift to us this, this Christmas. And then it came up as a great suggestion to partner with the cafe for Teacher Appreciation Week. But we're doing it actually through the whole month because we don't want to overwhelm the team at Kindness with 700 orders in a week. So they started this week with deliveries at Lugo McGinnis Academy, Venable, Burley Moran, and Jackson Bya, I believe was today. And we've gotten great feedback and next week are the next elementary schools. And then we also have two days to cover Walker, two days to cover Beaufort. And then we're doing a mixed approach to cover CHS later this month. And then virtual staff are able to, their names are going to be on a list at the cafe and they can stop by anytime the cafe is open and pick up either a bakery item or one of their great beverages. And this has been just a great project. I'd like to thank Beth Chuck and Julia Green for helping me get this going and get this out to everyone. But for anyone who's not familiar with the Kindness Cafe, it's located at the Brooks Family YMCA. And the mission of the Kindness team is to provide meaningful employment for adults with cognitive disabilities while creating a joyful and inclusive community space. And I've had the pleasure of visiting over there now a couple of times and it is, it's just such a great team. And so we are so excited about this partnership. So for our teachers, don't, if you haven't seen the cake and fruit yet, and it's not just the teachers, it's the nurses, it's everyone in the building, all the staff participating in this with us. Know that, you know, we are taking it, we're, week by week, we're, we're doing different buildings, but we're really excited about this partnership.
And I would add that the Kindness Cafe is operated by one of our former teachers. And she is also the widow of another of our former teachers. So that makes it even more special for us to be able to celebrate what she's doing and to have her, you know, work in this very important project with us.
That is, that's so wonderful. And that makes, makes my heart smile to hear that. Thank you, Ms. Ivory, for, for bringing that to our attention to, to partner with them because they're a wonderful organization. And I do believe we did, I don't know if he's still there, but we did have a, a former student who was actually working there. So I know. Yeah, yeah. So that's wonderful. Thank you so much. What a great, what a great partnership. Thank you both. Thank you all for that. All right, moving on, we do have next on our agenda, a special recognition. And this recognition, if it's okay, I'm going to read just a little bit about what that's about. And then I've asked Mr. Bryant to read it for us. And I'm sorry, basically, this is from VASS, which is the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. And, and typically, I believe they name a superintendent of the year. And they kind of narrow the, the pool, you know, the, the choice down from all of the Virginia superintendents. And this year, they actually, because of the extraordinary year and just circumstances that we're all working through, have decided to recognize all 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendent's as Superintendent's of the Year. And there is a recognition. And I guess Ms. Thacker, if you would share that and Mr. Bryant, if you're still comfortable reading that, that would be great.
Recognition of 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendent's as Superintendent's of the Year for 2020-21 school year. Whereas in order to ensure the health and safety of all Virginians, schools across the Commonwealth closed on March 13th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And most have provided virtual instruction since then as in-person teaching and learning, learning evolved. And whereas individual school divisions retain the autonomy to decide whether or not new instruction would continue and the format in which the instruction would be presented. And whereas stable and consistent leadership by local school division superintendent's has been virtual and serving children through the pandemic. And whereas school division superintendent's are responsible for the health, safety, welfare, and education of each child while creating school cultures, even within a pandemic that serve all children regardless of their circumstances. And whereas public school division superintendent's utilize guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, Virginia Department of Health, Virginia Department of Education, local health departments, and local case data in fulfilling leadership responsibilities in their communities like no other time in their careers. And whereas local school division superintendent's worked collaboratively with their school boards, educators, parents, and community stakeholders in providing technology resources, curriculum content, emotional support, and meals to children during the pandemic. And whereas traditionally, VASS Superintendent's of the Year have been selected via a diverse panel of education association after reviewing an individual superintendent's ability to demonstrate leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. And whereas all 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendent's have extraordinarily exhibited these qualities while leading their school divisions and communities during the 2020-21 school year. And whereas the VASS Board of Directors agreed on January 7th, 2021 to suspend the traditional selection process of determining a single superintendent of the year and unanimously agreed to recognize and honor all Virginia Public School Division Superintendent's as Superintendent's of the Year for 2020-21. And whereas VASS is appreciative of the Virginia School Boards Association supporting this resolution and the honor provided to each division superintendent by having his, her respective school board present this resolution to the superintendent to be recognized within the community for which he, she serves and needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charlottesville City School Board does hereby recognize Dr. Rosa S. Atkins as a Virginia Superintendent of the Year for 2020-21 as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendent's, VASS. Adopted on this sixth day of May, 2021, Charlottesville City School Board, Lisa Torres, Chair, Julia Green, Clerk of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we move on to adoption of our consent agenda, please. I would entertain a motion from.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you take, take on that, please?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Yes.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to action items. 9.1 is our special education annual plan, part B flow-through. Dr. Odie, I guess that goes to Dr. Baptist, but I'm sorry, I did not acknowledge you earlier.
Not a problem. I'm just going to send it right on to Dr. Baptist to.
Thank you.
Talk to you more about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. And before I introduce this item, I have been reminded that I misspoke about Nurse Jackson. I'm not sure what I said, but I should have said she is retiring from Beaufort Middle School. So if I misspoke, I apologize. I don't know what I said. I thought I said Beaufort. But Ms. Jackson has been at Beaufort and we're definitely going to miss her at Beaufort. So, thank you. For the special annual plan, this is something that is done to get our federal money for special education. Last month, Mrs. Katrina Lee shared information about the plan. And I'll ask her to see if there are any questions or anything else she would like to say about the plan and ask that the board approve the plan so that it can be submitted. Ms. Lee?
Madam Chair, members of the board, annual plan was presented last month for special education for our annual federal grant. And I will entertain, we're asking for action today so that it can be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education next week. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Move that we approve the special education plan as presented by Ms. Lee?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Anybody have your questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Appreciate it. Dr. Baptist, Madam Clerk, if you'll take a vote or roll on that, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Yes.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you both. And next we have another action item, which would be adopting our fiscal year 2022 budget with some technical updates. Dr. Odie, would you like to announce that, please?
Sure. Renee Hoover, our Director of Finance, will come before you now to present that FY 2022 budget with those technical updates.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and, and board member. We are bringing back to you the FY 2022 budget that you adopted on February 18th with some technical adjustments that have come up after that adoption. Next slide. The, the, the first item on the table is there is an increase in state revenues from the conference budget. And you were aware of this in March because we presented this to city council. And that is $358,701 that we'll be adding to the general fund. So along with the state revenues, if you go down to the bottom, is the CARES funding. And we said that if we received more state revenues, that we would reallocate CARES funding to the special revenue fund. So you'll see that we are subtracting $752,825 from the general fund and add it to the special revenue funds to be used in FY 23 budget. The next item, going back to the top, is that there is a decrease in the Adult Ed Plugged-In Grant. We didn't apply for that. So that is decreasing the special revenue fund of $78,246. We mentioned in December that we closed fiscal year 20 with an addition to the fund balance of $51,114. And we're just adding that to the FY 22 budget. The class program of this year moved to the YMCA. So we are taking that out of our budget. So you can see a decrease of $787,241. What is new on this is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board implement a new standard for this, for fiscal year 21. And so therefore we are adding it to our FY 22 budget. And that is that we will be recognizing the school activity funds within our budget. And that is an addition of $594,595 to the special revenues. And then lastly is that we budgeted our salary and benefit increases in the general fund. However, our Virginia preschool, early childhood is kept in the special revenues. So we are decreasing the general fund by $131,078 and moving that to the special revenues to match the salary and benefits for that program. So with all those adjustments, the budget will have a slight increase of $138,923. I just, I'm sorry, I just noticed that the parentheses is going in the wrong direction there. But anyway, that, that is supposed to be an increase for an overall budget of $94,399,251. So we are asking the board to adopt the FY 22 budget with these technical adjustments. Are there any questions?
I have one quick question. I don't think I understood the grant. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I could.
Absolutely. Yes, go ahead.
The grant decrease in the Adult Ed Plugged-In, do we just not need that funding or?
The Adult Ed Program, the Thomas Jefferson Planning, oh, planning, sorry. The Thomas Jefferson Adult Ed Program, which is run out of PBCC, decided not to apply for that grant.
I may, we're just a fiscal agent for that program. So those decisions about what grants to apply for and so forth are housed under TJ's.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say I'm a little confused and I, I, that's, I don't, I'm sorry. I, the recognition of school activity funds is one area I'm confused. And then I'm confused about the CARES funding allocation. So does that mean that we are decreasing the amount of our, no, can you just explain that? Because I don't want to guess again. I mean, I'm, so the recognition of school activity funds, I feel like we need to talk about that separately. But I do have, the initial question is about the funding allocation transfer regarding CARES funding.
Okay, I'll take the CARES first and then I'll go back to school activity fund. For CARES, if you recall, we budgeted all the CARES money in the general fund. So when we received additional state funding, they, we then said we would decrease the CARES funding that we have budgeted and move it to the special revenue fund. So it would be held in the special revenue fund for the future budget years. Does that make sense?
I guess for me, what was confusing about that is I, I mean, I do remember saying we were waiting to see what we were going to get. But since they're, they're, you know, unequal amounts. I mean, we were basically just holding that, that CARES money in the general fund. You're saying we're moving it now to the special revenue, even though we didn't get an, an equal amount. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
And there's no plan to currently spend any of that money in special revenue. We're just holding it for future expenditures that we have not identified nor. We're just holding it for future expenditures that we have not identified nor, you know, agreed on or discussed.
Correct.
Madam Chair, just had a quick follow-up with that. I was gonna ask it later, but maybe now is a good time because we're talking about those funds. And I had just a specific question about the American Rescue Plans there, out-of-school funding, particularly for this summer. If we have allocated those funds yet, what we're gonna do with that? Is that different?
I think it is different.
Okay, all right.
I think we receive those, but please, Kim or Renee, correct me if I'm wrong.
Do you mind if I take that one? So we're, we're still waiting for, we've heard speculation or estimates about what we will be receiving, but that's a future technical update that you can look forward to. We also, what's important, in addition to understanding the amount, are the guidance and guidelines and specifications that come with those funds when the amount is actually officially conveyed to us. So we really are in a wait-and-see program. But at this, at this moment, we, you know, none of those funds are needed to come to bear on the operating plans for this coming year. But some very important discussions and decisions will need to be made around those funds once the amount is confirmed and once we know the rules and regulations attached to those funds.
Okay, thank you.
So to go back to the school activity funds, the school activity funds prior to this fiscal year was held as fiduciary fund. And they were audited separately, and they still are by Virginia Code. But the General Accounting, I'm sorry, Governmental Accounting Standards Board created a standard, and the GASP is the accounting standards in which we follow for accounting practices, implemented a standard in which the school activity funds need to change from being a fiduciary fund to being accounted for within our regular general fund, special revenue budgets, and financial statements. And, and the, and the flowcharts, even though that they are separate decisions are made at the schools, they still follow the school board's policy in making those decisions on how those funds are spent. And that's what's requiring us to account for those funds within our budget. It's gonna be a separate fund, and it's more of an exercise of just taking that school activity fund audit and converting it to an accrual and putting it into our financial statements. It really doesn't have any overall effect to our budgets.
It's a reporting standard that, that we need, accounting and reporting standard, but it really doesn't affect the control of those funds or how they're managed. It's just an additional reporting requirement, if you will, is the way I view it. Renee, I don't know if that's fair statement, but that's really, you're gonna see it in the, in the certified annual financial report now, where you didn't before.
Correct, and that's accurate and better clarification. Thank you.
I think that's important. I think that's good. But I just want to make sure, like, if people are donating to the PTO and that's being held, I mean, I know some PTOs have their own, so maybe that's a bad example, but maybe there's like a scholarship fund, or, you know, we're all going on a field trip. I mean, I just want to make sure that those are, there's not gonna be treated any differently than they've been in the past.
There will not be any different treatment of it.
And that amount that you have plugged in there, I mean, that's based on prior? Is it, I mean, is that a best guess of kind of what that, those numbers have looked like, or those funds have looked like?
That, that number that I, I put in the table was the FY 2019 into the year balance for the school activity funds.
Okay. Jennifer?
Well, I go ahead and move that we approve this technical adjustment to the budget.
I'll second that.
Any other further questions or discussion from anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Renee and Kim. Madam Clerk, will you take a vote on that, please?
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsburger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now moving on to items for discussion. And we have our 2021-2022 student annual fee schedule. Dr. Odie, would you like to announce?
Sure. We again have Dr. Beth Baptist serving as our interim Director of Special Education and Student Services, and she'll present that proposed, I'm sorry, we're talking about the student fee schedule. She'll present the student fee schedule for 2022 for board consideration. Dr. Baptist, you have so many things tonight, I'm getting them mixed up.
I've got them all spread out.
Got you, got you.
Every year, we do bring the student fee schedule to you as one of the requirements. And I have shared, Leslie is sharing that with you now. And what we did is we took the fee schedule from what we've had previously, and I did check with the principals to see if they anticipated any change in fee schedules, and we don't anticipate any changes. But do want to make sure that everyone realizes that any fee that we may have for a student that the student cannot afford is on free or reduced lunch or other issues, we will not have that student not have access to what they need for their educational program just because of funds. So this is the fee schedule that we bring to you tonight, but know that no student will be hindered by not having access to what they need. Any questions about the fee schedule?
I just have one question, and maybe, and it's not really a question as much as a suggestion, that maybe we take out the free and reduced lunch because so many of our students now have like universal free and reduced, you know, it's like kind of universal in most schools. And so I just want to make sure we're still using the correct language. If people ask, we will give them, probably, you know, we'll probably be able to waive the fees. That's kind of where we are, I think, as a division. And so maybe the language is a little bit, I don't know, old-fashioned at this point, given that we don't even really do free and reduced lunch anymore.
We can certainly go back and look at that, and you make a valid point, Ms. McKeever, so we can, you know, revisit that, but making sure that we have the amounts in here that we do anticipate as fees, but we'll update that language.
Can I ask or comment on one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. So I really like what you said about, you know, this is the schedule and no student will be turned away. And if we could just put that like as an asterisk somewhere at the bottom, just to, so it's written out. I know on some of them it says can apply for assistance, but the statement you said was all encompassing. Like, I was gonna ask a question about some of the things, but yours was all encompassing. It might be on each individual bullet, but it's nice to just have it there with an asterisk just to say, like, our values as a division.
Okay, I will make sure that that is added as well. That's a good point, Ms. Bryson Morsburger.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure. So this is information item for this evening, so we will bring it back with these changes that you've recommended.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody? I don't mean to put Mr. Koma on the spot, if you don't mind, just looking at the Chromebooks and just curious. I mean, are we planning to collect those this summer? I know there had been talk about students, you know, having continued access, and is that, are we looking okay with Chromebook?
Well, we definitely want to get our hands on them this summer. Some of them have gone quite a long time without being refreshed and updated. So we'd very much like to have our tech teams get our hands on those devices for this summer so we can get an accurate count, account for any damages, and try to prepare for the start of the next school year.
That makes sense. And then we did have hotspots too that are out, are we hoping to get those returned as well?
Yeah, so the hotspots that are out will expire in August, and then, well, many of them will expire in August. And then those remaining hotspots will move over to our grant program, so the hotspots can be kept. And then when we, when we hand out the new hotspots for those, like do the exchange, those hotspots can be kept indefinitely.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Torres just spoke and said that it was for information. It is for information slash action. I understand that the language wants to be updated, and we can bring it back in June if you'd like, or if we could have it approved in principle as far as the amounts and any documents that need to be prepared into going into the school year could go ahead and be prepared. So I would ask, do you want to wait till June for approval, or can it be approved in principle and be brought back to have the language changed?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that. Thank you. I'm comfortable with it. Anybody else have any reservations?
No, I would, I would go ahead and move that we adopt the 2021-22 student annual fee schedule.
A second. Can we add the caveat, though, that, like, I think it's, just as a friendly amendment, I would like to suggest that we add the caveat that Ms. Bryson Morsburger suggested, which is that we state our values at the top or at the bottom as an asterisk related to our community value, which is that anybody who wants one will be able to get one.
Sure.
Do you accept that amendment?
Yeah, sure.
And the second was by who? I'm sorry.
One.
Okay, great, thank you. Any, any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk.
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsburger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Baptist, if you want to keep on rolling, it looks like you're up again with the 2021-2022 school board meeting schedule.
Yes, Madam Chair. On the screen are the dates proposed for the school board meetings for the 2122 school year. I will point out that we don't traditionally have a meeting in July, so there's not a July date. And also in April, that is not the first Thursday because that would coincide with spring break. So we generally do that the week after, so I wanted to make sure those were noted. And this is an information slash action item. We realize that if we need to change the dates for meetings, that can be done, but these are the ones that could be expected by the Board and community. So I would ask, is there any questions, or if the Board would be willing to approve this so we can have that published as well?
Thank you. Any questions, Board members? Comments?
It's just, we know that there's gonna be so many meetings, so, like, especially coming up to July with respect to the policy update. So I wonder if we just, I mean, we just know when these other meetings are gonna happen, so they're not on the schedule, and we haven't identified a date, but I don't know. This is fine. I would move that we accept this schedule.
Second.
Any questions or discussion from anybody else? All right, great. Madam Clerk, if you will ask your vote, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsburger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you much. Appreciate that, Dr. Baptist. And our next item for discussion is our safety and security model. Dr. Odie, if you'd like to announce that, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have Kim Powell, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, who will present an update on that safety and security committee's recommendation to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Odie, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We are pleased to provide this update on the school safety plan to you before you vote this evening. And I'll pause here for a moment and give Ms. Thacker an opportunity to get the presentation up. So let's, you can go ahead and go to the first slide. Thank you. So we'll start by reviewing the process of how we got to this point. And I'm joined again tonight by two of our wonderful committee members. Parents Ashley Sanali and Cleve Packer are gonna be presenting this information along with me. So also, before we really dig in here and get started, I want to give a big thanks to Charlene Green for her help as a facilitator and a thinking partner throughout this process, and also to Beth Chuck, who has done a masterful job in helping convey so much information to the public throughout this process and doing so much great work to keep the content updated on the website that we've used every step of the way to share all of the work done by this committee. So just a huge thank, a big thank you to all of the people who've worked together in this process, and especially to those leaders. So our process to date by the numbers, starting back in November, we've had a committee of 30-plus members who have met eight times. We've had a number of community listening sessions, and we reached out to students, staff, and others in many different ways. You'll recall that back in March, we came before the school board to give you some of the bare bones of this plan. And after that, we created a video and a survey in six languages. Finally, we invited the public to the committee's last meeting, which was last week, April 26th, I'm sorry, April 27th. And during that meeting, we discussed additional details about the model, and we answered questions from Dr. Atkins and the community. So again, all of this work and much more can be found at the website listed there at the bottom, And we can go on to the next slide now. Thanks. So the survey asked one key approval question and gave several opportunities for open-ended comments. And you'll see that the responses for satisfied or very satisfied outpaced the dissatisfied or very dissatisfied by a rate of 61% to 9%. So we have shared with you and posted to the website a very long document showing all of the community comments. And this slide here also summarizes some of the common themes that emerged from those comments. Next slide, Leslie. So while we were seeking community feedback about the big ideas of the plan, we simultaneously named some school staff working groups to really operationalize the plan for the elementary, the middle, and the high school levels. And as they completed their work, they identified several goals for this overall plan to move forward. We need, obviously, the overarching goal is to maintain safe and supportive school environments for all students and staff in order for them to thrive using both preventative and proactive measures. And those key areas, or those key pieces that are gonna have to work to make this goal, to make us, to help us achieve this goal, we have to have caring relationships built on shared experiences and training that appropriately equips both our dedicated safety staff and all staff in our buildings with tools for de-escalation and student support. To get this right and to meet this goal, we have to have communications that create a culture of caring and mutual respect in the CCS community for all students and staff. And we also need to have common sense and consistent tools, technology, and resources to secure our facilities and respond to emergencies. So that's the summary of how we got to this point and the overarching goal with this model. And with that, I'm gonna turn things over to Ashley and Cleve to delve into some more of the details. Cleve?
So thank you again. So the three main areas we wanted, I will be discussing tonight are people and positions, training and communications, and systems and relationships. We'll start with We'll start with people and positions. As you might recall, this plan calls for the creation of new positions that we're calling Care and Safety Assistance, or CSAs. There will be three at UFR. One is a brand new position and two are existing similar positions that will be converted. At CHS, there will be four CSAs, all of which are new positions. At Lugu McGinnis, there is a similar position that will be converted. The elementary teams included Walker did not request to have CSAs on site. One thing to note is that the positions that are new will be converted by the funding that previously was allocated for the School Resource Officer Program.
As a parent and a community wellness partner at the Foothills Child Advocacy Center, I want to thank the board for its strong investment in positions like social workers, ecologists and counselors. This model relies on that type of investment. Next year's budget increases the number of social worker or social emotional support counselors at every level. And that's in addition to the school counselor positions and the other professionals already in place at the schools.
So Leslie, I think we need to go back a couple slides. Yeah, let's hold on this slide for a little while. So.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know it was advancing.
That's okay. Thank you. It's definitely a team effort here. So Cleve talked about the CSAs and Ashley talked about the importance of the social workers and the social emotional support counselors were really excited about these positions. Also, the AP position at CHS that was eliminated for fiscal year 2021, fiscal year 20/21, that will be restored and that was part of the FY22 budget proposal that was already adopted. And finally, an existing operations supervisor position will take on the role of coordinating various aspects of the new model. Crossing guards will report to this position as they are gonna be shifting from the Charlottesville Police Department over to Charlottesville City Schools employment for fiscal year 2022. However, the CSA positions will be hired and managed by the building principals and much of their training will come from the division's intervention and support supervisor and mental wellness facilitator. So that's an overview of the positions. Yep, Leslie, this is the correct slide now. So we need to integrate these planned elements into essential human resources activities. And this came directly from the school work groups and I thought these were great recommendations. So for instance, we need to make sure that the job descriptions for these new positions very clearly specify the duties and responsibilities. We need to develop interview questions for all CCS positions that effectively capture the candidate's experiences relative to safety, relationship building, supportive behaviors and equity. No matter what position someone's applying for, we want our interview questions to delve into these areas. And last but not least, we need personnel evaluations that will really integrate topics such as de-escalation skills and relationship building into the evaluations for all of our positions. Next slide, Leslie.
Now we'll move into the second main area, training and communications. The key essential knowledge and core training will be the areas such as mental health, stress, first aid, de-escalation techniques, restorative practices, cultural competence in areas such as race and gender, trauma-informed practices and Charlottesville Schools policies and safety protocols. Other elements to be updated include updating policies, procedures and key safety documents. As part of this process, our committee has learned about a number of local or regional safety resources that can assist in areas such as planning or training. Finally, the schools will develop a professional learning plan to systematically address school safety and security with a clear and consistent combination of both startup and refresher learn, refresher trainings. This plan will address not only the specialized positions such as the CSAs, but will also include all staff to make sure that everyone is working together.
Can we have the next slide, please?
Just before you go to the next, Kim, I would like to know who will be developing that plan?
So during the presentation that you saw last week, there was a pretty strong outline of the mental health and social emotional de-escalation pieces. A lot of the pieces that you see here, specific training sources were, were noted in that presentation. And that, that is, that's the plan with that, with regard to that piece of it. With regard to the safety training, we are gonna use a combination of DCJS resources and their trainings coupled with some local training that will mainly be like partnerships with, with CPD and other, like the Regional Emergency Management Group. That's a combination of UVA, Albemarle and Charlottesville, and I'm part of that group. So on the safety side, at least certainly until the new supervisor position is in place, I'll be laying out those trainings and working to bring those resources to bear. And then I'll be working with Patrick Farrell and Jody Murphy for the mental health and wellness trainings and getting all of those scheduled. So short answer is me.
Okay.
Don't have a supervisor position in place, but I'm not gonna pretend to be an expert in all these areas and know that we're gonna be leaning into the, the best training resources available, both at the local level and the state level.
That supervisor is going to require a significant amount of knowledge. Isn't, based on what you've just said, to be able to combine and facilitate this, this relationship, these relationships, is that accurate?
Yes, and that hiring process is well underway. And I'm happy to report we have an excellent candidate pool. And the folks who are, you know, who made application for that position all have very relevant experience. Was very pleased with that. Process is not done, but that position won't be in place until July 1st. So, because that, that's when the existing position is open. That's not to say that the person who's ultimately selected couldn't start doing some work perhaps before they join us officially on July 1st or whatever. But I have no delusions that this is work that's gotta be done sooner than later. And so a lot of that planning will certainly fall to me to make it happen, consulting with the training experts in these areas. And the person who comes on board will need to, need to continue to train as well. I will tell you that I participated in trainings through DCJS and those are trainings that I will want these individuals to go through, both the supervisor as well as the CSA positions. Our school principals have gone through the same types of trainings.
Are those trainings especially for the principals? Because the, the school building CSAs will be, you know, reporting to the actual principals. I mean, is that something that they go through more than once? You know, they get refresher trainings on those? Or are we asking and hoping that they will be able to do that here with this new program?
So I think it will be a good time to refresh and reach out and see where all of our principals are with those trainings. I know that the one that I'm referring to is the one that, when I sat through it, it was a combination of law enforcement, school security officer and school administrators all sitting in the same room, going through the training. I went through it in Weir's Cave. And I know that a lot of our principals have done it. But we need to look at, you know, what schedule we need to be on for them to have the refresher training and what makes sense. I'll be honest, it's a, it's not an insignificant commitment in time. It's a better part of a week. So we might need to look at doing some carve-outs or specialized training for the refresh. Because I don't know that everyone should sit through that entire body of training, you know, every few years. But there are pieces of it we need to probably be refreshed on more often. And that's something we need to look at. And, and I'm sure one thing I had found, working with our liaison at DCJS, is that they, they will work with us to, to do carve-outs and things that make sense for us, especially under a new model.
Thank you.
That's a good question. And that was the common theme. It was touched on here that we really need to be, especially as we're launching a new model, we have to be very intentional about our plans for startup training and for refresher training, not only for new positions, but really for all staff as it relates to this new model.
So Kim, I have a question. With this new model being developed and in place going to start a school, are these individuals, where we have teacher workdays, professional workdays, are they on, are they also wanna be involved in specialized workshops or trainings, you know, just as the teachers?
Yes, one of the, I don't, go ahead, I'm sorry, I may not.
Go ahead, finish my question.
So one of the analogies or ways I explained this, this community of the CSAs, the new CSA positions, is the relationship we have right now between the division and the custodial staff in the buildings, the head custodians. They are hired ultimately and supervised ultimately by the building principal. But once a month, they come together with this division position that we're, you know, someone's retiring. And so we're tweaking that role and expanding it and we're making new hire for that supervisor position to replace the person who's retiring. They come, that person brings all the head custodians together once a month to go over the latest in policies, procedures, rules, regulations, hear their concerns and so forth. And I also made the comparison to like our health and PE teachers, right? They're part of a school community, but they're also part of a division-wide health and PE department. The CSAs are gonna be the same way. They're, they're gonna be part of the school community and, and that's ultimately, you know, where that hiring and direct supervision happens. But they will also be brought together at least once a month as a community of the folks in this position, filling this role. And through that, we'll be able to address, you know, regular PL for the whole group and updates and hear their concerns specifically as it relates to their role across the buildings and learning from each other. You know, that type of professional learning community with your peers in the same role is really valuable. And so that's why we want that structure, although the working groups, the principals, particularly from the high school and the middle school, were very passionate. They want that position to be identified as a position in their building team first and foremost. But we're still gonna have that community with them touching base once, at least once a month. And, and so they have that sense of camaraderie with the same people doing the same role across the division.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have a question too. I guess, I guess this is how we're going through this. My question is, what, what is, what are the qualifications that we're looking for in the CSA positions? Like what would, what would an ideal CSA look like? And in, in, what are we looking for in hiring these people?
But that was in the, and because I don't wanna leave off anything important, I'm trying to go back to the presentation from a week ago because that really did a nice job of spelling out the vision for those positions that'll largely inform the job posting, I believe. So I'm bringing that up now so I can look at it while I'm answering. And if any of the other, if Ashley or Cleve would like to, here we go. I found it, if you'd like for me to share. It's slide seven from last week's presentation. So minimum of a high school diploma, minimum of six months of related experience working with adolescents in education or community environment, proven ability to respond to difficult situations and to take appropriate action in stressful or emergency situations according to board policies and procedures. And of course, training on our policies and procedures will also be part of, you know, onboarding these folks. Familiarity with secondary school operations and adolescent development, relationship within the Charlottesville community, current first aid CPR and other relevant certifications are assets. And then we get into the different training of, the overview of the training that will be required. So we're looking, you know, the ideal candidate will have all of these things. But we realize that we may, we may find a great candidate, maybe who doesn't have the strong, you know, existing relationships in the Charlottesville community. But if they've proven that they can build relationships in the community and they've done so effectively elsewhere, you know, we certainly wouldn't rule them out. We don't know what kind of response we will get yet to these job postings. But I have to say, I was very pleased to, for the responses we got on the supervisor position. Of course, we haven't been able, we cannot post these care and safety assistant positions until the board takes action to adopt this plan because these are new positions. They're not replacing or tweaking existing positions. Those are the new ones that weren't already approved as part of the budget process. So the CSAs are really one of the main things we have to get, we have to go beyond developing the plan into actually having an approved plan so we can post and, and start working on hiring these CSAs.
Thanks a lot, Kim.
Kim, that confused me a bit because isn't this, we, we're basically replacing the money that we use to divert to the police department to hire these positions?
That's correct. It's not about the money part, but because it's a, a new type of position, I mean, we, we wouldn't wanna say that we're can, we're not tweaking SROs sort of, I mean, maybe you could say we are. But it's a, it's a new position that's unlike, that's not, it's not really something we exactly had before. And so we, and, and we also, it's the same money, but you guys, like you have your human resources agenda each time you meet where you're actually approving positions. And these are new positions. So the money is, is already in our budget. You're correct. It's part of, it's, it's the funding that we already use to pay CPD for the crossing guards and the SROs under the, the old model. So the funding is there, but these are actually new or additional positions. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And I know that at the meeting last week, we, they talked a lot about the high school diploma and not wanting to have, you know, be too, too high a barrier there. You know, because then maybe they, you know, whatever, there was just a long, you know, a question about that. And I have that same question remain, like, again, I, it's, this is, these are really trusted people in our community, in the division. So I'm very concerned that the professionalism will not be there in order to differentiate the, the, the CSA with the student. You know, if they're too buddy-buddy, if they're too, you know, friendly. So I just wonder, can you explain a little bit more? Because I would want at least an associate and at least some professional, I don't know, training or leadership, something of that sort. And so I'm just, can, just have a lot of questions about the high school diploma only.
So actually, Ms. McKeever, I, I believe that the discussion was less about the high school diploma on that point. It was more about the minimum six months and whether the six months was enough time. And so we talked about that, you know, what it, we, we set the minimum of six months. I won't say it was arbitrary because there was some discussion around it. But the idea was that if there was a young person, maybe someone who's still in community college or, or taking community college classes or something, but a young person who just shows that they've got the relationship skills, that they, just because they're young and they don't have a lot of experience, if they have enough experience, that, that they're proven to be those, that type of relationship building person and they, they're of course gonna be subject to our training and our supervision and so forth. We just didn't want to set a bar that could rule out someone who might be interested, who would be a great fit. I don't know how to describe it. I don't know how to give it any better rationale than that. I would say that you have to know that one of the reasons the principals were so passionate that this, that they don't want this position to be a division higher, division supervised position is this is part of their building family. And they, we talk so much about even with the SRO model, fit is everything. And so I think everyone's eyes are wide open about what we're looking for in the type of person who is gonna be in these critical, in these critical new roles. And we know that all eyes are gonna be on this new model. So it's exciting, but it also does, you know, the stakes are very high for us to make good selections. And we've never been in this pool before, right? We haven't hired for these positions before looking through this lens. So it's, it is new. Over time, we may tweak and refine this job description, but I think we wanted to leave ourselves open, not knowing when we cast the net, what kind of applicants we're gonna get. We wanted to be as open as possible. So we didn't accidentally or arbitrarily preclude people that, that could be a great fit. I don't know if I'm giving a very satisfactory answer to that question. But if we place an educational requirement like an associate's degree on the position, I think there was some concern that we might not get, we could rule out someone who could be perfect because of what we're looking for with the safety mindedness and the relationships, which don't necessarily, you know, require associates. And unfortunately, there's not a, because we're on the leading edge of this new model, that we're not alone. Albemarle County is looking at something similar, as you're well aware, other places are doing the same thing. But nobody's way out front and there's not an existing certification program or something that we can lean on to help us vet people in advance, if that makes sense.
Kim, did, the Toronto, the group that came or spoke, I guess via Zoom, did they have a job description that, that our group looked at at all?
This is taken heavily from that, yes.
And then correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm not wrong, but I might be. Dr. Irazari and Dr. Hastings and Dr. Turner were, were involved in this committee here, part of this committee. And were they involved in, in looking at that job description?
All correct. All correct.
Okay. And they hire, they will be hiring for their buildings?
Right. They're going to be considered the hiring manager, if you will. And so again, they, they above all else know the type of person that they're looking, that needs to, to be in these roles to relate not just to their students, but also, also to the staff. It, it's, it's a fit is the, this, one of the terms that kept coming up throughout our discussions as a committee is fit. The importance of fit. And that's just a, a hard thing to, to define, I guess. I can't think of a better word than fit, but that's of paramount importance.
Thank you. I mean, I know we kind of jumped in there with questions. I appreciate you taking them. I don't know if you want to finish the last couple of slides and then we can open it up for other questions?
First, would Cleve or Ashley like to say anything else in response to those questions? I, I don't mean to just kind of jump out and field all that without giving them a chance to also weigh in. And I don't even know where we are in the script now, to be honest, on these slides.
I think we were, yeah, the next one up, I think was.
Okay, systems and relationships.
And relationships, yeah.
I think you covered it, Kim.
I would agree, Ashley. I think that you covered everything that the committee discussed during this process.
So in terms of systems and relationships, the first item on the list is revising the memorandum of understanding with the Charlottesville Police Department. There are three state required interface areas. Those are required reporting to the state, crisis planning and threat assessment teams. So the MOU will cover those and then we'll also need to clearly spell out how the schools and the police will intersect, such as under what circumstances police will still come to the schools. And again, a key element will be the continued partnership with community partners to maximize consistent services for students. So areas such as crisis plans, safety audits, threat assessment protocols should all be in sync with best practices. The committee recommends continuing your strong support for staffing mental health professionals and maximizing student involvement. One example of that is that CHS was a national pilot for the teen mental health first aid program that's now taught to all of the school's 10th graders.
Regarding technology and facilities.
Leslie, I think you're on the wrong slide. I'm so sorry, Cleve, I didn't mean to interrupt. There we go.
Regarding technology and facilities, there was an agreement to keep upgrading common sense technologies such as door access controls regarding metrics and reporting. We heard from staff, the data from before the pandemic may not be the right benchmark moving forward. The schools will develop, excuse me, the schools will be developing new surveys to help gouge student and staff perceptions of schools' climate and safety under the new model. In addition, the committee recommended that schools develop a reporting tool to document CCS calls for emergency services such as police, fire or rescue, depending on who's called or who responds. And we've heard some good ideas about how to do that.
Thank you, Cleve. I think we're ready for that last slide now, Leslie. So in closing the presentation, it, we want to reinforce the old adage that it takes a village to do, to do much of anything significant. And we will need the whole Charlottesville City Schools community and the whole Charlottesville community beyond our schools really to work together to provide and maintain safe and supportive schools for all of our students and staff to thrive. And I know we stopped and took some questions there in the middle, but we really are happy to entertain any other questions you, you may have. We know this is a very important decision. A big process with a lot of people went into getting to this point. So please let us know what other questions anyone may have at this time.
Thank you. I guess board members, if you, if there's specific slides that you would like Ms. Thacker to pull up so we can look at any areas, but otherwise we'll go through and, and field questions. And Dr. Kraft, I see you kind of, I think, if you want to start?
Yeah, I was sort of like, yeah, whatever I was doing there, but I would first like to say I'm a big fan of this new model. And I really commend everybody who's been involved in this process. It's been a very thorough and inclusive process. Wide, very wide scope. So I'm really pleased with the direction that we're going. I just had a couple of smaller points, I guess. One, one being, you know, I guess as a board member, one, one of our responsibilities is to ensure safety. And I wanted to just get a, a sense of, you know, at, at what point would might the police be called in, in some kind of a crisis situation? How would that actually work? Is there an example of something like that?
Sure. So when we talk about this whole area and then talking particularly with, with Dr. Irazari at the high school, I think some of the questions that the board has received leading up to this decision and action is, you know, what are the top things that we would still maybe need to engage law enforcement on? And it was funny when, when the question was asked in that direct way, I had the answer because Eric and I have talked, Dr. Irazari and I have talked about it enough. It's fights, weapons, drugs. Those are the, those are the top areas where we may need to call for police assistance. Now, the details of what that will look like are some things that we still honestly need to work out with the police in the MOU and how we want to handle those situations. But we do have panic buttons in all of our, in our schools. And I will tell you that we're going to need to work as a team internally to, to come up with what our language is going to be inside on our radio systems that the admin uses to, to, when a certain type of thing comes up, and most likely it would be one, something under one of those headers. A fight, and when I say a fight, I mean a fight that's big enough where, and this doesn't happen very often, but it, you know, where there's like just a big situation where we need to call in help. It, it could even be because it's turning into something medical, right? Where someone's been hurt. So we're going to have something where we have a protocol where some keyword, like when they come over the radio, if you say button and fight or whatever, that means we need someone to press the button, which will get police coming that way. And then we'll provide additional information when they're in route. But that's not something you're going to do lightly. And we're going to have to have within ourselves these protocols really well ironed out, what they look like, when to use them, when we need a rapid response. That's thinking about like an example that's more common, something that's not common, and I'm going to knock on wood here, we, is intruder, right? But that's one that we're going to have to be prepared for. There's training that's, that we, we've done as an administrative team. We need to extend it to all of our staff. And of course, with our new safety personnel, it's called avoid, deny, defend, ADD training. You know, we're going to have to re, re, reroll that out with all our administrator, all staff. And that's something, like I said, I, I would not put that in a classification of something that's common, but you asked for what a common thing would be. And, and here's the other thing, for things like weapons or drugs, most of the time when an administrator finds something like that, it's not an emergency. So we can take our time to report it. So there's, there's all kinds of things you have to think about. There's, 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 there's going to be concerns and we have to be prepared for that emergent situation where response time is critical. That could be something like a fight. But again, that doesn't even happen that often where it's an emergent, you know, where it's something that you have to have that super fast response unless it's turning into something medical. That's the most prominent thing. Intruders, like I said, knock on wood, we haven't had that. I hope we never do. But we have to be prepared and we have to have that protocol in place. Things like finding a weapon or finding, or finding drugs, you don't have to necessarily, you don't hit the panic button for that, but if it falls in that category of legally required reportable offenses, then we have to have a protocol step by step, how that's going to be handled. Those are things that have to be ironed out in the MOU. I hope that answers the question. There's, that's a big question. I was just trying to give some examples off the cuff.
Well, it sounds like you, you guys have talked about it a lot and thought about it a lot. And, you know, I hope those things never happen, but, you know, I think it's just important that we're prepared. And it sounds like you are.
And the public needs to understand that the MOU is a public document. So that's all going to be public facing. And those non-emergency things, people will be, will be able to see step by step how they're going to be handled because that's ironed out in the MOU. Things that are emergency responses, pieces of that are tactical, and that won't all necessarily be public information. Because it's, it's FOIA protected, but it's all, but regardless, the people who are responsible in those areas, we have to have it ironed out step by step so that all parties know exactly who's doing what and what to expect to respond to both the emergent situation or the non-emergent situation, but it requires a response under the law or whatever.
Add one other question, Madam Chair, if I might?
Yeah, go ahead. I, I have a nuance or a follow-up along that same question, but go ahead, ask your next question.
Yeah, my other question is just how, have we thought about what process we will be using to assess and measure the impact and the success of this model and whether, you know, tweaks, changes need to be made?
So there's going to be two main components to that, and I believe they were in the slide deck this evening at, at the end there. But one of them is the survey, and there was feedback from the working groups, we need, we need to survey at the beginning of the school year and the end of the ser, and, and the end of the school year, at least until the model is really well understood and just part of our DNA. Because we've got to know where students and staff are upfront with their understanding of the model. And then at the end of the year, after we, you know, lived with it for a year. So those are two key data points for us in assessing the new model. The other thing is we are going to be keeping, there's, you know, state required reporting around student discipline and stuff like that. We can certainly look to, to that data, maybe as some indication, I don't know. But then we are going to have to keep records of our callouts for emergency support and what those callouts are for. And one of those things that, one of the things we talked about is that you have to understand when you call emergency services, a lot of times it's a multi-agency response. So just because the police come does not mean that the police specifically were called. It could be, you know, just a call for medical or whatever, but a lot of times you will get police, fire, you know, you get multi-agency response. And we see that, we've seen that this year on a medical call. You, you don't just get the rescue squad. Sometimes you'll get EMS and police. Sometimes you'll get police and fire for the EMS piece, but yes. But we need to just document what's called for and who, who responds. So we'll have that data.
Thank you. And thank you for all your leadership on this.
Well, it's definitely been a team effort.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. And Kim, you, you touched on a little bit right there, but your response to when, when Dr. Kraft asked for examples of when the police might be called, I was wondering if the committee teased out, and, and then this is a, a bigger question just nationally now, you know, when, when there's a medical emergency, you know, can we, and we need to change, you know, our response as a community, can we call specifically for just medical support? Even though there might be a response of everybody, that's what we need. So did you guys talk at all about that?
We did.
You know, and that may be training and obviously, but I mean, somebody being hurt as opposed to, you know, I'm envisioning, you know, a, a, a big group, you know, fight where people are getting hurt left and right. Obviously, you need a different type of support as opposed to an individual who's hurt.
So I, let me give you an example. We had an incident at one of our schools just this year where there was a, a threat of harm to self, where there was enough concern that the parent and emergency service both were called. So the parent was here, was, was, was at the school on site, but, you know, emergency services needed, needed to come. The first folks who got there were police. And then they were helpful as far as one of the people called and called ahead to the squad and said, please come in without your sirens and stuff, that come in quiet. So that was helpful. I honestly, we haven't gotten far long enough in our discussions to, and I honestly don't know how much we can talk about it with the emergency services, but that's a whole other ecosystem and network. And I have tremendous respect and not a full understanding of how all of those things work together amongst the agencies and the 911 and, and the cross. So we, I don't know, that is something we still have to iron out further. And we didn't have, we had a liaison with CPD who listened in on our committee meetings. But we didn't have enough representation from the emergency services group in the committee or in the process so far to, for me to, to know.
Yeah. Kim, just let me chime in a little bit because it's my understanding also that, that whatever agency is closest to respond, a lot of times the police are there, they are around. And they are trained not at the level of emergency, you know, care that EMS and others are. But if they get there, if they're closer, they're going to, you know, provide services until, you know, the ambulance or whatever comes. So I mean, we certainly can look into that. I'm not sure if we want to dabble in that too much because it could be a safety issue.
And I think the other thing is too, one of the things we did talk about is, is there a way when we do have a situation where we can call and, and kind of make sure there's not an over-response by any one agency? And like, say, we, we, but then that, that's tricky because really is it ours to say? I think we just have to report what we're seeing or what we need help with. And then I think from there, the emergency responders and their policies and protocols kick in. And there, and really when they arrive on scene, you know, depending on the situation, if it were actually something that requires what they call an incident command center, incident command system to be put in place, you know, depend, it depends on what the incident is as to which agency is the lead on that. And there's, that's what I'm saying. There's a whole ecosystem around safety and crisis management. And obviously there are people that their entire career and their professional, their professional life is around those things. And so we have to understand those handoff points and what it looks like. And that's defined by the MOU, but we don't have, we, we won't necessarily be, we, we will not be able to dictate or define how the, what the response looks like up to, after a certain point or up to a certain point, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. I know that's a, that's a deep question. More complex. Let me move on. I know, Mr. Wade, you were on the, on the committee. Do you have any comments?
No, my only comments was that, you know, was really, I was proud to be part of this. And LaShandra and I, we, we, you know, it was just a lot of meetings and, and they really worked together as a committee because, you know, people are all over the kind of spectrum as to what they wanted. And, and it was awesome because everyone really worked together and came up with a solution. We listened and compromised and, and I just think we got a, a great product in, in the end. And I know we need to put it to, to work now, but I think that this is, can be an example of what we can do as a community in addressing really difficult problems and solutions and, and coming up with solutions for it. So I don't have any comments. I think we, as, as committee members, as spoke throughout the process, and I just wanted to thank the committee members and, and Cleve and, and others who were part of this. It was really a great process.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
I don't have any questions at this point. I'm more of a visual person, so I won't, if we vote this, if we vote for this new model, I have to see it. And I trust the judgment of the principals who will be hiring these folks to work in their buildings. I do know that when I taught, safety wasn't, was a concern for me when I walked into a building. I wanted to feel safe. And so did a lot of other people, the students and the teachers. So with all the hard work that this committee has, has done, I won't, I won't comment until I actually see it in action. And I'm sure the judgment of our principals and other people who will be on that hiring committee and hiring these folks to work in this, because I was concerned of their education level, because I know that the principals are going to do a good job in hiring the right people to work in those buildings with their children. So that's, that's, that's the critical point right there. That's the first line of defense. Getting hired and the principal will be able to see with their eyes and other folks on that committee. The folks that they will be hiring to work with their children and staff members. So I'm hopefully looking forward to this new model. We'll see.
Thank you, sir. LaShandra, did you have any comments?
I just wanted to agree with what Juan said, that we, you know, we were on the committee and everyone did a lot of really good work and it was just a good process. And just, you know, to reiterate that it was really hard to find a model to, you know, to kind of weigh on when we're building ours because it is something new. And we're building something that, you know, we, we had to look at the Canada model. So we're building something that's very new. And so I understand the concern about the education level, but also on the same And so I understand the concern about the education level, but also on the same level. I just want to say that like, it's, it's the entry point. It's not necessarily to say like that that's going to be everyone that you hire. But since this is new and we don't know, you know, what it's going to look like in the end with, you know, what the, you know, the CSAs will look like. We wanted to give the principals, we wanted to give them as much latitude because my background is in HR. And if you find the right person, you can get them the training that they need. You can bring them up to where you want them to be. And so it's new, we can tweak it, we can come back in a year, we can say, you know what? You were right, maybe we should have, but we were starting somewhere and we wanted to have as much latitude. So I appreciate everyone's work and I hope that, you know, as we roll it out, everyone's concerns can be addressed because it's not going to be a one and done. We're going to have to be visiting this, you know, continually to make it, you know, the Charlottesville model and then the other, other places in the US can look to us as a model. So this is just the start and we can only grow it better.
Thank you. Ms. McKeever, did you have some other questions?
I, I did. Well, I have some more comments. I think I appreciate, well, obviously Kim Powell's leadership and the leader, the committee's work. I think it's a, it was a huge task and I'm so grateful that there was some consensus around a model. I think that is critical and something that, because of the consensus and the hard work of the committee, I will support this new model. I think it's appropriate that we continue to have discussions and ask really critical, hard questions. In fact, I think you should have a committee, a subcommittee of that larger committee to continue to work, to see how it's going, to look at data to, I just, you know, I mean, we looked at that policy a couple of months ago at a school board level, and we said, this does not work. We wanted a new model. We still don't have a new model for what our, so our policy related to calling the police is really outdated. And so there's just a lot of gaps in moving forward. And so obviously you cannot have, like, we're, we're giving you a skeleton, or you've given us a skeleton to approve. But we have a lot that remains unknown. And I think we quarterly need an update on this model moving forward. Because the stakes are so high, this board has to be deeply involved in making sure that there is, what this committee intended is what is actually happening. Because so often that's where we, like, when we hit the ground, it's like, oh, it looks really, it's pretty. You know, it's like when I was in Argentina, this guy says, I said, why do you guys have lines on the road? He's like, oh, it makes the roads look pretty. Like, they didn't care about the lines on the road. I care about the lines on the road. And I need to make sure that it does not just about looking pretty and about saying the right words. On the ground, our students need to be better off as a result of this dramatic shift. And it's something I think I'm very confident in the current leadership that we have at the buildings to make it happen. Hundred percent confident that that, that those principals and our mental health teams will be able to succeed and make this work. I, but I also need to make sure that in the future, when those particular people aren't here, that they understand and they can walk into a system that works. So that's what I just have so much anxiety around, making sure this works. And I'm sure everybody else does too. I just thought that we should say it. Because it's a big change and I definitely needed, hundred percent agree and needed and exciting. But because it, it's like on you, Kim Powell, to make this plan, I'm, I'm like, how is that possible? Because she's in four other meetings that I had today. So it's impossible. So that's why I think she needs a little committee of people, maybe made up of that other committee to, moving forward. It cannot just be on Kim Powell, it cannot just be on this new operations supervisor because they're going to have a lot of other jobs and we need, this is a huge priority of our division. And in order to make it succeed, we have to prioritize this. So, along with all of our other priorities. So that's why I have a lot of anxiety and I'm, I'm supportive of it, but I'm also critical of it so that we can make sure the future is bright for this model.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. I do, I have some comments, but I would like to check in with Mr. Johnson, our student rep, and, and ask if he'd like, has any questions or comments around, around this.
Sorry, actually there was a lot of noise in the background. So I personally want to thank the committee and everybody who worked on this model. I am truly in love with everything that has been put in place. Oh, is that Adam? Did I, okay, there we go, because something popped up on my screen. Okay, but yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone for their work. I'm excited to see the plan come to fruition next year, and I just wish it the best of luck, you know. And I hope that, you know, everything goes as planned, and I agree with Ms. McKeever that, you know, this is something that we will have to, you know, stay tuned with and, you know, make sure that everything's running smoothly. But I, you know, I have full trust that the committee put in a nice model that will work. So again, I just want to congratulate everyone and, you know, thank you all for putting in the work and dedication into a model like this. That was very much needed for next year, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank, thanks to all the board members for your comments. I did have a couple of questions and, and I mean, I, I know you've spoke a little bit, Ms. Powell, to the positions and the funding for some of the positions. So I was just curious from an HR perspective if we could get an update, Dr. Hubbard possibly regarding like the social workers that we had plugged in to this next budget. And just as far as hiring, I know that the CSAs aren't posted yet, but for the social work positions, if, if we had an update on those.
Yes, we've hired two of the 6.5 social emotional support counselors. So we have four, four more and a half to go. And for the clinical social worker position that we've been working on all year, we have, as of today, secured the fifth and final one. So we're well on the way of securing people for these positions.
And have those been like located, I mean, specific schools or are you just hiring them for just at the spot at this point?
In, in the work with Jody Murphy, Patrick and Katrina Lee, what they really want to do is once we get everybody on board, we're going to have a grand total of like 15.5 people that will work in this field. So then they're going to let, you know, principals are involved in placing who they want at their school for the social emotional support counselor. So some of them have been placed. I can't give you specifics right now as to all of them. You should have seen, I think maybe two on the, on the board docket for this, this cycle. But we're, we're, we're heavily into the process and hopefully by June we'll have all of them filled. But we're working hard to get it done. So that, that's really the best I can give you right now. We've got about four more positions to hire in this field in, of the social emotional support counselor. We have a great pool and interviews are taking place every day. It's just a matter of hiring the people, putting them in the right place, and then letting the work get done.
Thank you. I guess I, and, and I don't know that anybody has answers about this, but just, you know, concerns. Again, looking at our, our budget, you know, this year as far as the fact that we use that CARES money, you know, to fill and cover some of these positions and then looking to next year already. And some of those social work positions, I believe, were grant-funded. So I'm so supportive of, of all of these positions and, and want them. And I think we need them in our schools, but just want to remind, you know, the board and the community about just the upcoming budget, which I'm already not looking forward to. But anyway, I, I do also appreciate all of the work that, that, you know, the committee did in, in this new model. I'm excited about it. A question, Ms. Powell, as far as the MOU, is that kind of pending the approval of this, this program? And when, you know, when does that happen and who, who, what does that look like as far as the timing for that?
So I had shared with the committee and also with CPD a couple of examples of, several examples. One being Toronto, Alexandria had the newest in the state that even though we're not going with the traditional SRO model, they had a lot of good equity-based work in their MOU, even in a model that still had SROs. So there were different ones that we had pulled and pointed to as examples of the direction we need to head in, different components of those that we would want to use. The next step is honestly from, for me to take the, the model and come up with a, a draft that fits this model once it's adopted, using those pieces that we've seen that, that fit with where we're heading with this model. And then turn that draft over to CPD and City Legal Council for them to just give an initial round of feedback on it. And then, then we go from there with working, working with the board and sharing it out further. But I anticipate that the MOU, I mean, that first draft has to be done within the next week or two. It's one of my night and weekends projects, like the thing that just has to be done. The, the push is worth it, and I don't, in, in response to Ms. McKeever's comments, which I understand, I share her concerns in many ways. But I don't, you know, I've got great administrators around me who will, who also want to be very involved in this process and making the model work. And I don't hesitate to tap my colleagues. I need my colleagues and they're, they're good thinking. You know, Denise Johnson, Beth Chuck, Eric Yerzary, you know, Adam Hastings, all these folks, our middle school team, you know. I, I, it's not anything I'll do alone. I'll put it that way. I have to pull them together. I have to have their, their good brains in this process with me because the truly, the devil's in the details when it comes to implementing something like this. And we have to be extremely attentive to those details and very mindful of the smart, of what the intentions are of this model. Make sure we honor those intentions at every turn as we work out those details.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, this, yeah, it is, and I, I agree. I hear you, Jennifer, with your concerns and Kim yours as well. And, and I think this is something that obviously we had a lot of community input. And, you know, at the beginning and onset of this, when, when we first, you know, made the decision, the board made the decision to, you know, look at the current MOU and, and making the decision that we wanted to go a different direction. I mean, so the community spoke, the community is supportive of this, the board is fully supportive of this. It is something new, it's something different. I mean, I, I too, I don't know how much is too much, but I think, you know, like, like Jennifer said, to continue to have, you know, a smaller working group, you know, whoever you think those players need to be, or we do. You know, as far as working on, on some of the surveys and working on some of the data that we need to pull on, on reporting, yes, you know, to the board. Like, here's what we have in place so far. I mean, I would love, again, some type of update, you know, as we get closer to the beginning of the school year. Where are we at with this? I mean, we need to hear it, and I think the, the community needs to hear it. I think we need to also be asking for feedback from, from teachers and staff because, you know, safety is important for everybody and, you know, people view what makes them feel safe differently, right? I, I personally, I don't begin to speak for the board, but back to the point that I was trying to make earlier. I, and I don't know how to make this happen or who to have this conversation with, but I do not want the police coming into the building for medical calls, you know. And, and I, I know that's, it's, it's a big conversation that we need to have. And I just got a notification not too long ago that I think the, the police civilian review boards meeting, you know. But I mean, there, there's a lot of, of interest on, you know, when and how the police respond to different things, you know, throughout different communities. I mean, we see this happen every single day. And, and it's important. And I think, you know, our students need, and they did speak, they, they want to feel safe, you know. And seeing police rush into the building for a medical emergency, I think, is not what I want to see happen. So I, I don't know how we, again, weave that into the decision tree-making process and the training that we get. But I think we need to continue to have that conversation with, with staff and through the training. And then even if we can have that conversation during the MOU process too, I think, I think it would be important. So it would mean a lot to me if, if, you know, we don't lose sight of that piece of it. But, but thank you so, so much for all of the work, all the committee members, community members, students, teachers and everybody. So thank you for this.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Ody.
I just want to just chime in to echo everyone's support of, of this plan. I sat in on most of the meetings as just a silent observer and, and just watched everybody work. And there was lots of great commitment from that committee. So I'm excited about having a plan ready to, to put into place and implement next year. So I want to add my thanks to Kim and, and her team of staff and parents and committee members to get this work done. Important work.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and move the approval of this plan as outlined by Ms. Powell.
My second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from board members, questions? All right, so we are going to ask the clerk, please, to call for a vote on this.
Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson-Moore Spurger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Torres? And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Wow, that's great. That's a big, that's a big wow. So way to go, Charlottesville.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's really, that's huge. So thank you to everybody again. All right, we will move on to our, our second opportunity for comments from members of the community. Again, as a reminder, please raise your hand in, in the, in the Zoom room, in the waiting room there. And Mr. Koma will call on you. You have three minutes for your comment, and if you will please state your name and address at the beginning of your time, that would be appreciated.
Great, and I'll start by saying that right now I do not see any direct messages in the chat, and I do not see any hands raised, so we can give that period of time again, and I can update you after that, let you know if anyone has decided to chime in.
Okay, we'll give a little bit of time. I don't know, we could spotlight somebody, you could play with your new technology. All right, one more check.
Yeah, the check at this time is all is quiet on the attendee side and the chat side.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will move on to comments from our board. And let me scoot on through and see who, anybody raising their hand. All right, oh, Ms. McKeever, I see your hand go up, and we'll start with you.
I'll just be relatively brief. I wanted to just say, well, first of all, the, I can't remember the name of it, but the art gallery online that's happening, oh. Stay muted. Okay, so the art gallery online is happening right now. That's, can you hear me? Yeah, and please go to that, what is that called? I can't remember, but go to that. There is going to be a lot of opportunity for public comment over the next, and public input over the next, I don't know, probably six months, eight, almost a year on various topics. And I really want to encourage the public to kind of keep their eye out for those opportunities and to participate as you are able. I'm being vague because there's like at least three different things that are going to be meaning public comment, including our superintendent search, probably reconfiguration, and what else was there? Anyway, that will be happening. But I also wanted to say one thing that I think I could say every month, but I, I don't. Because of the crisis, COVID crisis for the past, has been going on for so long. I just feel the need to say thank you to all of the people because there have been so many instances of goodness and kindness and support. because there have been so many instances of goodness and kindness and, um, support that has really gotten us to this point, which, um, is I, I, I think a little bit easier than it was a year ago, but still really hard. Um, and every day we see these good and kind acts, um, in our classrooms, um, via our, uh, screens and, um, people who just even doing the basics, like masking up and washing your hands and social distancing, um, that has been so critical. People have gotten their vaccine, thank you. But also just the nurses and the teachers and the IAs and our principals, like every day, working to make sure that our, um, students can get the possible education. And I just feel like there's never going to be enough words, um, or enough days to say thank you to all of the people who've made this happen. And I just am incredulous every day at all of the goodness that I've seen. And, um, it warms me, warms me a lot. And I just really, um, hope that, we can find a way to recognize all of that, uh, because it's been a lot. And I really appreciate the efforts that you have made, even if I have not been able to individually thank you. Or even as a board, appreciate you. It's just, there's a lot of people doing a lot of good work and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank.
Yeah. Dr. Craft?
Well, I, uh, would like to, um, just say a little bit about somebody who's not here. And, um, this is, uh, the last month that, uh, Dr. Atkins will be our superintendent. You know, she's not here, but for the record, um, I just wanted to express my very deep appreciation to her, uh, for the, her leadership over all of these years. Uh, I've come to understand a little bit more about what a monumentally hard job she has had. And, um, she has, um, served us with, with grace and integrity. And, um, that's basically what I want to say. I just really appreciate, uh, uh, all that she's given to our division over these years. And, um, I think we've been very lucky to have a leader, uh, like her and, um, she will be missed. And we will also be, uh, uh, taking very seriously our superintendent search. We, board members are, you know, we also want to hear from people about that. Uh, as you have thoughts and questions about that, we're, you know, we're around and would welcome those. But basically, thank you to Dr. Atkins.
Ditto.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Yes, Mr. Wade, you're up.
That's, I just wanted, um, convey my support, wouldn't share his end nor the comments.
Thank you. See here. Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, um, for all the teachers and staff and administration, the nurses, all the people making the schools work. It's been a tough year. So just wanted to, um, say my appreciation. And I also wanted to, um, reiterate what, um, board member McKeever said about opportunities for public comments. Because, you know, for the board and our search for a new superintendent, um, the, you know, we're, these are public positions and the, the best way for it to run is for us to hear from the public and for you to hold us accountable and what you'd like to see happen and the type of superintendent you'd like us to, to look for and to find. And so I'm just looking forward to hearing from the public, from students, from parents, from teachers, from the administrators, everyone, um, so that we can, um, find a really amazing person. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bryant.
Yes, I'd like to also again, give a shout out to all of our school nurses, um, for the amazing job that they do uh, in our schools, very important, critical, um, position. I've worked with, um, the two, at least one of them that's retiring. And I do know that, um, oftentimes I could go into her, into the clinic and have wonderful conversations, uplifting conversations with Anne Sandrich. So a shout out to all of our nurses, uh, who do amazing jobs in making sure our, our kids are, um, well taken care of. Also our great teachers. Wow, what a one-up profession, teaching. Uh, our IAs, the custodial staff, that, um, the cafeteria workers, everybody. It just takes a whole village. And, uh, again, congratulations to all of our great teachers as well and administrators and other staff members. And finally, um, I'm losing my voice to parlor, but I certainly want to give a, um, a shout out to Dr. Atkins as well. What an amazing job, um, you've done for the Charlotte Public Schools for the past 15 years. I remember attending the first, um, um, conference in Williamsburg and leaving a session and said, where are you from? Charlotte. Oh, you have Dr. Atkins. Then so people just, they went all, so you are well loved, not only in this community, but all over the state. Um, you left your mark here in Charlottesville and I wish you well in your retirement. You have been amazing and thanks for, for being such a caring and wonderful, um, superintendent as well as friend and mentor. Thank you so much and good luck and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments? Thank you so much for, for being part of, uh, the school board for the last several meetings. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, um, I guess, uh, going off of that, I want to thank the board and, you know, Dr. Ico, I'm going to have this position. You know, I think it's a very important, important position, um, that's needed. So for me to be a part of it, you know, I can't be more grateful for it. I don't know how many more school meetings I'll have, you know? I know next month there's one more, but you know, I don't know how many times I'll be able to do this. You know, if there's a chance for me to apply next year, you can bet I'll be the first one in line to apply. But, you know, I am so grateful for my time on the board and, uh, sharing my opinions and, um, getting to know everyone. And, you know, so, you know, I just want to thank the board again for this position. Um, and, you know, going along with everyone, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Atkins as well. I've only spoken to Dr. Atkins a few times, but her impact on the district is immense. And, you know, going back to elementary school, I mean, you ask who your superintendent is, everybody knows who their superintendent is, is Dr. Atkins, you know? We all knew her from a young age, you know, whether we spoke to her or not, um, the time she would come to the school. You know, everybody would get excited, everybody happy because, you know, they know that their superintendent is someone they can look up to and, you know, be proud of saying that that's their superintendent. So, you know, as the years have gone on and I've gotten to speak with her and, you know, gotten to know her. It's true what people say about her being an amazing person and, you know, you want to talk about doing an amazing job for so long. I mean, there, there's no better example than what Dr. Atkins has done. So I want to thank her again for, you know, everything she's done and I wish her nothing but the best in her retirement and in her, uh, her new position with, um, the Department of Education. So, you know, thanking her again and thank you, school board, for my position on the board as well. So thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you. We, we are, you know, in, in debt to you. We all appreciate, um, the student perspective and, and I just, I, I can't imagine, you know, having these meetings throughout the last few years without hearing, um, from our students because you, you definitely bring, you know, the, the, the feet on the ground in the building perspective and it's, it's really appreciated. So thank you. I do, uh, also just want to, you know, extend my gratitude as always to everybody, um, throughout the division for, for all of the work. I mean, this has just been, um, I mean, what a year. You know, and it, it, you know, I, I hope everybody feels appreciated every day. I mean, that, that should be, um, what we all strive to do and, and, you know, to be able to appreciate somebody and I hope, hope you feel appreciated as well. And just be kind, right? Humans and human kindness and be both. That's on my car. So if you see me driving around now, you know, the sticker that's on the back of my car. But I also do want to remind everybody again, as a couple of the, the school board members said, you know, uh, how important, um, public comment is. And, and yes, there will be a lot of opportunities, I think, throughout this community for that. Um, I don't want to, um, scare anybody, um, in that, you know, we are trying to indicate or signal right now that you need to reach out to us now to have, have that opportunity to be part of this process. We are just, um, you know, just meeting with this firm for the first time, um, next week to just kind of set the groundwork and, and set the stage and, and, and get the calendar out there. And, and so, um, after that, um, you know, we will have an opportunity. I do welcome, um, and the board I know welcomes to, um, if there are groups that, that want to be part or, you know, in, have an opportunity to meet with this, um, firm. And, and we are still trying to finalize what that might look like, if it's face-to-face or if it's Zoom or, or a combination of both. I mean, we are, um, open to all of that and, and to any group who wants to, um, participate in this process. Please, you know, start to email us now. Um, I mean, I think we've got a, an incredible group of board members. Tenured board members, we've got an incredible group of, of staff, um, you know? So as we start to create the list of who we want to include in this process, you know, I, I imagine it's, it's going to be a tremendous, um, tremendously long list, but I want everybody to have the opportunity to share if you want to share. So, um, please, please reach out to us. Please stay tuned. And again, this first meeting is just again, the opportunity for us to meet them and to kind of set out our, our agenda for, you know, for the next several months of how we're going to proceed. So, um, thank you again, um, everybody for your, for your comments. And thank you for all the work and everything that was presented tonight. And, um, we can now move on to superintendent comments. So Dr. Odie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I do have a few comments. I want to start out by just reiterating our tremendous thanks to our CCS teachers, especially during this year's Teacher Appreciation Week. We all know quite how, how much of a different year it was. And we already quote somewhere that it's the teacher that makes the difference, not the classroom. I think that's really fitting since we've had in-person and virtual classrooms this year in this time of COVID. And our, our wonderful teachers have made a tremendous impact on students' lives, working hard to keep them engaged and showing them what they, what they can do, even in this, uh, day and time in COVID and showing them that they care. Even though our teachers were going through lots of things themselves. So thank you to our teachers. And, uh, reiterating our, our, our thanks for our nurses, um, today being the first day of nurse this week. What time it is to be a nurse. Uh, they certainly stepped up and assisted with COVID vaccinations and so many other duties that are just quite different than their normal tasks. And we appreciate them so much. And then if, if Leslie would, yeah, there we go. We've got that unsung heroes awards. I want to talk about that. Uh, we have several, um, unsung heroes. As you remember, in the fall, we celebrated VIPs, uh, in the fall and winter. And now we're looking at our unsung heroes. These are, um, exemplary support staff members who go above and beyond, uh, to make an impact on students and fellow staff and school communities. And we're in week four of these recognitions. Uh, so I'll go ahead and start, uh, just sharing out who these great folks are. We have Ann Martin, a custodian at Beaufort, Susan Roberts, an administrative tech at Lugo McGinnis Academy, Eli Stefano, systems analyst at the Division Annex, and Freddie Williams, custodian at Clark. And then we have Marcia D. Bell, Nurse D. at Jackson Vaya, uh, Jane De Gregorio, instructional assistant at Venable, Jeannie Humphrey, administrative tech at Walworth, Elise Yates, accounting tech here at the Division Annex, uh, Administration Office. Leslie Benson, cafeteria worker at Johnson, Chabi Bandari, custodian at Venable, Julia Green, our clerk, uh, here at DAL Administrative, Administrative Tech, and Lynetta Jackson, Nurse Jackson at Beaufort. And she, that's one that was retiring, I think, this year. We have one more page. I think that was it. So we, we certainly want to, I thank all of those great support staff, our unsung heroes that get an email when they have been nominated and have been selected by our committee to be recognized, uh, during the week. So we'll continue, uh, recognizing unsung heroes for the rest of this year. Um, as you probably know, June 8th is, uh, Democratic Primary Day. And we just confirmed today that we're going to have that as a synchronous virtual day for all, um, Charlottesville City students, since several of our sites are polling limitations. Uh, it's a big election. We've got governor, lieutenant governor, city council. Uh, so we expect lots of traffic at the schools. Uh, but the good news is that we now have learned how to continue instruction virtually during this time of COVID. So we shouldn't miss a beat on June 8th. And you may recall that, uh, last year Governor Northern declared Juneteenth, which is June 19th, a state holiday. And this year, uh, Juneteenth falls on a Saturday, so we will recognize it on Friday, June 18th, as I believe the city will as well, the city government. It won't impact students, uh, since the last day of school is on June 11th, but we will have that as a, a recognition on June 18th, which is Friday. And I want to give a shout out to our art department and Ikorst and his great team. Uh, we have an Art Connections Online Spring Art Show and it's on our website and you can check it out there. And, um, I just want to specifically thank also the art teachers, uh, in our school division and our students for creating wonderful, wonderful coloring books, uh, that our students, all students will have access to. I was able to get a couple of them last week and take them home to some little ones in my family, uh, to take a look at. And, and they're just amazing. We have such great talent here in Charlottesville. So thank you to Aaron Ikorst as well as his team, um, for, uh, creating these amazing opportunities for our students. And lastly, um, the VSBA has extended an invitation for school divisions to participate in the Eighth Annual Food for Thought Competition to showcase programs that we have, uh, that combat childhood, um, childhood hunger, uh, provide healthy school meals and encourage wellness and physical activity. And there are three separate competition categories that we, as a school division, may apply to, uh, to be recognized for our efforts. And one of them is meal access to fight hunger. Another one is healthy school meals. And a, a third one is, uh, wellness and physical activities. And we're hoping to apply for recognition at least one of these areas, uh, but I think we really could apply for all of them. I know that Jessica Brantley, our, our health and PE coordinator, uh, is, is looking to submit, um, an application for our day of, day of play event that we had earlier in the fall that I know many of our families participated in. And I, I spoke with, uh, Kim Powell, I believe Carlton Jones is going to be applying as well as we know that we've worked really hard to make sure that our students are fed, uh, each and every day. Now, I don't think it requires a motion or a vote, but the VSBA would like to know that our superintendent and school board are in favor of us applying. So I wanted to take this opportunity to put it before you now, uh, to, to sort of get the nod or the thumbs up that you're okay with us, uh, moving forward with applying for that, for those recognitions. Well, that's all I have. So if it's okay with you, then we'll go forward with applying. And, uh, and we know that we'll win, uh, because of the hard work that all of our teams have, have put forward this year.
Thank you, Dr. Odie.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We will move on to our work session wrap-up now with Dr. Baptist.
Okay, there were just a few items, um, from the, uh, fee schedule to go back and revisit the language regarding the free and reduced lunch. Uh, add the information about our core values and no students being denied educational programs under the safety and security to either continue and or create, uh, smaller committees to work on the safety and security to keep from Ms. Powell from doing all of it. And then to have updates on the safety plan closer to when school opens so that the board and the community will know where we are at that point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything from board members that she didn't capture? Anything from board members that she didn't capture? She always does such a great job. All right. Thank you again. Um, and now, um, just wanted to, um, share our upcoming meetings. We do have, as I've mentioned a couple of times, our meeting next Friday, the 14th, um, which is our work session. And that's the, the first opportunity that our, our board will have to meet with HYA. That, um, will be held from 12 to around 2:00. Um, the location is still, um, to be determined. Um, but most likely will be at the Performing Arts Center. Um, and that, that will be a, a face to face, but we will have mitigation practices. And again, it is, is open to the public to kind of listen into that, um, meeting. Um, then May 21st, um, at 3:00 PM and May 22nd, starting at 8:30, we have our, our annual school board retreat, which we did not have last year, um, because of COVID, but we will have that. And that is held in Richmond. And then on Thursday, June 10th, so please, um, make note that this is not going to be June 3rd, which is typically when we will meet because graduation, um, originally, I believe, was scheduled for the 3rd. But we will be meeting, our board meeting, um, will be June 10th. Um, and stay tuned, um, for that as well, because that may be a face to face meeting, if we can get a location for that. And I think that is all I have at this point. Um, and if there are no objections, we will call this meeting adjourned. So thank you, everybody.